Aren't waiting, so it is six eleven. Six eleven, thank you. I'll call this meeting to order. Um, welcome to the school committee meeting of December fourth, two thousand and twenty five. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. All members are in attendance, but some of our guests may join us remotely. We will have a roll call to confirm we have a quorum. Colleen, we'll start with you.
Present. Oh, they're here, sorry.
Percy, you're here.
Loomis here.
Hamilton here.
Great. Um, this meeting is open to the public and will be broadcast by ECAT. If any members of the public here in person wish to make a comment during the public comment period, you will be invited to do so, and we ask that you state your name and your address for the record. All remarks should be addressed to the full committee through the chair, and each speaker will have three minutes to state their comment. Topics for public comment are limited to matters that are within the scope of the school committee's authority, and public comment is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. So the next item on the agenda is the student representative to the school committee update. Veronica? Lindsay, okay, great.
Hi. Okay, so just some general updates right now is that the month of November was absolutely huge for school spirit and throughout all the schools, it was just super fun with spirit weeks and also pep rallies. It was just a great time for vibes in the schools. And um, something that we're looking forward to is that the OA Student Council is gonna go back and meet with some OA, with some RO students, and it's something that they've done in the past, but it's super exciting that they're gonna go back because a lot of the students look forward to it as well as the high school students.
Um, and then just in general, all the student representatives for each of the respective schools are um, looking forward to setting up meetings with the principals and the admin, and we're, there are a bunch of surveys especially at OA that have gone out, and so we're looking forward, um, me and Lindsay especially, to getting feedback from students at OA and then the middle school as well. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item. Vote to approve Susan French Scholarship Trust assent and waiver of no notice for OA guidance. Dr. Cabral.
Thank you. Uh, Susan Mancuso, Director of Guidance, is here this evening. Okay, oh, I thought you were trying to give me some sign language. She can uh, come to the, the podium and uh, explain the document that you have, and um, we'll try to answer any questions like that.
Thank you, hello everybody. Actually, I do want to clarify, it's the Winthrop Ames Scholarship, not the Susan French.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, so in communicating with David Ames, um, back in two thousand and twenty-three, he um, moved the trust from the Easton Community Corporation to the South Coast Community Foundation, um, and they would now oversee the trust, um, and manage the trust. Um, at the time, there were two choices of how they wanted to move forward with the scholarship. The first choice would um, the, uh, excuse me, the Southeast Community Foundation would more so oversee and make determinations for the scholarship recipients. They would still remain OA recipients, but they would have more of a handle on it. And then option two would be to keep everything as it was, that it was determined by the internal um, OA Scholarship Committee to who the recipients would be. So in speaking to David, I just asked that we keep it at number two, which he was fine with, and that, that was basically the, the biggest change. I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but I would say once things moved to two thousand and twenty-three, the scholarship um, annually awarded one, uh, it, it's always been the same, one recipient every year, um, and starting with two thousand and twenty-three, the scholarship went up to thirty-five hundred dollars, whereas prior to that, it was nine hundred dollars. So it, it worked out. Um, but I don't know if there are other specific questions about the scholarship or anything like that?
Do anyone have, Colleen, Kelly, anything?
Is the scholarship ever split among students, or is it only ever awarded to one student?
Um, we've typically just awarded it to one student. They haven't clarified if we ever felt we were in a position we wanted to split it, I could certainly reach out to David and ask, but it's always just been typically one student.
Lauren, Jim, any questions?
Did you say what the criteria for selecting the students are?
Oh, I knew you were gonna ask me that. I believe with this particular one, it's a student pursuing college um, to do something in an art-related field. And so they would write a standard um, essay, one or two pages, explaining who they are, what they do at OA, and what they're pursuing in college. Um, and then the committee from there would just make their decision.
Thank you.
And so what is the vote that you're looking for tonight?
I don't-
Recording in progress.
Sorry.
I just saw myself on the screen, sorry. I don't know if there's a vote per se, I think the most recent paperwork that came through was just to notify us of any legal changes that were happening. I think they required to notify us because OA students are the recipients.
Okay.
So they handed it to us, but I don't think there's a, a vote, to be honest.
So it was, it's just that they're, they're getting rid of the, the requirement to have a surety?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
And that's gone through the court?
Yes.
And so we don't have any say in that? That's, that's what I was a little confused about was whether we were being asked to assent to that or not.
No, I think it was just meant to, um, legally, they needed to notify us because we're still the recipients, the ben, well, the students are the beneficiaries of the scholarship, but um, I, I believe that all is just handled by the court. So there's nothing we would need to vote on for it.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, you're gonna stay put, Ms. Mancuso, with the microphone.
Okay, so next item is the MASSS Certificate of Academic Excellence in NSDC Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning Awards. Dr. Cabral.
Great. I am very excited for this, uh, every year. At this time, we don't have a lot of these awards happening at the beginning of a year, they're typically at the end of the year, but both of these organizations of which we're members, which is why the superintendent is entitled to uh, award these honors to deserving students, is because they realize that these are very prestigious awards and students may want to make reference to them on college applications and things of that nature. And so uh, so it is very fun to do this at this time of year, and we're so happy to have two of the three recipients here this evening, but we're gonna acknowledge and recognize all three. The first is the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, the Certificate of Academic Excellence. This annual award is presented to a high school senior who is, uh, has distinguished themselves in the pursuit of excellence during their high school career. This student is recognized for a variety of accomplishments, including high academic performance, leadership roles, and community service. And Ms. Mancuso is going to announce the recipient and also give some more background on their many accomplishments. Ms. Mancuso?
So this evening-
This evening's recipient is Aiden Kabir. Aiden, if you would like to come up so I can say wonderful things about you while you're standing here? So actually, Mr. Smith, your counselor, wrote this for you, so. Aiden is exceptional in his academics, his involvement, and his character. While his transcript will show that he walked away from high school with nine A pluses in nine AP courses and seventeen more A pluses in seventeen honors courses, it does not cover his extensive involvement in so many important ways. He has committed an enormous amount of time to our band program, competing in jazz band, marching band, volunteering to teach music lessons at EMS, and competing at the highest levels of our music program in districts. He's been involved in academic clubs and held leadership positions in our debate club, computer science club, and environmental society. He somehow finds time to rock climb competitively, race with the Bobcats Mountain Bike Cycling Team, and holds a part-time job at Maplewood Country Day Camp as their rock climbing specialist. He has also learned how to scuba dive. Very impressive. In college, Aiden hopes to study quantitative economics, finance, or applied math. Among all the pressure that Aiden must encounter, he is constantly a kind, calming, and positive presence within the OA community. He is exceptional in every sense of the word and is deserving of any recognition for his achievements. Congratulations.
Mom and dad, I don't know if you wanna come and take photos? Yeah, just stand, yep. And then we could take one with your parents if you'd like. Yes.
And just so you know as well, we did notify your colleges about this additional recognition you received, okay?
The next, and please, if you don't mind staying, we're going to have photos with the school committee, but after, so that they're only standing up one time. The next award is the National School Council Development Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learning. This annual award is presented to high school seniors who've consistently pursued a high level of academic effort and who have also served as positive role models to the student body. The recipients of this award also exemplify admirable character and accomplishment, and we have two recipients of this award this evening. Ms. Mancuso?
First, I'd like to start with Ms. Emily Wang. You wanna come on up? Just come right here, and I'll talk all about you, okay? Emily is one of the most thoughtful and inquisitive students here at OA. Her intellectual curiosity, nuanced worldview, and consistent leadership across academics, music, and community engagement speak volumes about her character and potential. In the classroom, Emily listens attentively, seeks to understand differing perspectives, and responds with empathy and insight. She is always looking for the deeper truth in her learning. This quality has made Emily not only an exceptional student, but also a respectful and engaging peer who elevates every conversation she is a part of. Outside of the classroom, Emily is a co-section leader of the marching band and a member of both the jazz band and the Tri-M Music Honor Society. Beyond the arts, Emily has deeply engaged in service and civic participation. She is a member of the National Honor Society, Student Council, and the Library Leadership Committee. As a junior, she participated in Girl State, where she served, served as the state party clerk, and as part of the Southeast Regional Student Advisory Council. She also volunteers at South Cove Manor Rehabilitation Center and tutors for the Bloom Outreach Program. Emily hopes to study humanities or international relations in college, where she will continue to thrive academically and personally, contributing meaningfully to her college community. Congratulations.
Mom and dad, would you like to take some photos? Want to do a family photo? Yeah, of course.
Of course.
Just away from that, yeah. Try to get it out. There we go. Beautiful.
Our additional recipient tonight is Phelan Gansher. Um, she had planned to be here, but then was not able to get coverage, she, so she's working her part-time job tonight. But if it's okay, I'd still like to just read the write-up about her.
Yes.
Phelan is an exceptional student and an ambitious, patient, and compassionate young woman, whose work ethic and sense of purpose set her apart as one of the finest students in our school community. She has excelled in a rigorous schedule of honors and AP courses while balancing multiple jobs and extensive volunteer commitments. She has worked at, excuse me, Keery Brook Farm as a stable worker caring for horses with precision and care, and she has volunteered with the Mansfield Animal Shelter, Cat Canton, and the Natural Resources Trust, where she has raised foster kittens, supported animal rehabilitation and training, and helped children learn about local wildlife. Phelan is also a dedicated member of the OA Cross Country Team, earning Hockamock Honorable Mention and placing in the top ten in two thousand and twenty-three. She contributes to her community through her service in the National Honor Society. She plans to pursue a major in pre-vet studies or wildlife biology, a path that reflects her passion for animals and the natural world, as well as her determination to make a meaningful difference in these fields. We are proud to recognize Phelan in her accomplishments, her character, and the positive impact she has already made both in and beyond our school.
I'm gonna invite our two awardees, the school committee and Ms. Pruitt, please. Ms. Kavanaugh? No, I was- It takes the village, Ms. Kavanaugh.
Why don't we put you guys in the mix? And then we'll build this school committee.
Mm-hmm.
School committee, do you wanna come over there on the front?
Jackie? Yes, to the students? Just swi, swi, swap, I mean, excuse me. There you go. Thank you. Do this after.
Ready, one, two. I think it'd be cool if the parents also come in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Let's spread out so that they can be with their children. Thank you. Oh, no, please, in the center, right, front and center, front and center. We'll make sure you get these photos.
Ready, one, two, three.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I know.
I know, I love them.
I feel underdrust every time I come to these students. That's what it gets when you work your way down.
You are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like.
I think they're really busy with their academics and probably need to get going. It's hard to maintain all that.
Yes, I would say. Thank you for coming, we really appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Mancuso. Ms. Pruitt?
Yes, I just-
Thank you.
Just right there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item, uh, next, two items actually. Yes. Our vote to approve foreign travel trips. The first is for Paris and then for Panama. Dr. Cabral.
So we have, Maria Palma is on uh, the screen this evening. She is, as you know, the World Language Department Chair, and she is going to present these two trips, and you have the materials in your package, and she can answer questions that you may have when she's finished. Ms. Palma, thank you for being here.
Can I just, just the fir, one thing, just quickly, sorry, Ms. Palma, in your packet, if you're looking at it electronically, they, they both say Panama. Thank you. The first one for um, for the Paris trip is Peasharky. Thank you. I was very confused. Yes. Uh, yes, because we have two Sharkys running our trips. They're pretty amazing. Yes. Yeah, so we have our Patrick Sharky, our French teacher extraordinaire, is um, hoping to plan another trip to Paris, France for April of two thousand and twenty-seven, uh, with the French four and five students at the time. And he did this same trip last April, uh, two thousand and twenty-five, with the Explorica uh, company. Uh, it went beautifully, they had a fantastic experience, the students were just, you know, absolutely in love with it, and um, he plans to do the same thing again. It's a, it's a cultural and historical exploration trip. Um, they will stay in hotels and um, be with the Explorica travel rep the entire time. And um, he'll have, like I said, it's his French four and five students, those who are able to go during April of two thousand and twenty-seven and are still enrolled in French at the time. The trip's cost is approximately four thousand one hundred, a little bit more than that, um, and there are payment plans that the students and their families can set up through the company and uh, pay gradually as they go. And he will be the lead chaperone, and depending on the amount of students that enroll, we would be able to, um, if it goes over six, we would be able to get a, another chaperone to join, and the, the travel company rep will always be with them at the same time. Does anyone have any questions about the, the trip?
Any questions?
How many students went last time?
Um, that is a good question. I think it was about ten students.
Okay.
And mostly French five, but there were a few French four students that also attended.
It sounds amazing, so I can't imagine how all of them wouldn't wanna go, but I know it's tough with April vacation and cost. Um, but it looks like with, you're doing a ratio of one teacher per two students, right? So that-
Six.
I'm sorry, one, two, yeah, sorry. That math makes sense in my head, but I'm talking out of my head. It's one teacher per six students, and you have two possible chaperones.
Yes.
Already.
Yeah, that's what we had last time, and we would probably be able to do that again this coming time.
Amazing, thank you.
Any other questions?
I do.
Go ahead.
That's mine.
Oh. That's really funny. They're very close. Is there um, financial assistance available for um, for students?
So there's not an official program in place uh, through the travel company, but they are, uh, with the long-term, you know, payment plans, but students are encouraged to um, explore ways to fundraise as well. There's um, the option of, you know, sending out a link to, for example, family members if sometimes they get, you know, birthday gifts and things like that, um, or holiday gifts from family members. So it's um, something that, it is student and family funded though, so that, um, you know, and I would always be happy to talk with families and help them find ways to fundraise, but it would be an effort generated on, on, on their part.
And this includes flights?
Yeah, it does, I was looking through the package earlier.
It's an amazing deal.
I know, yeah, and, and I will say, these companies have provided such a great experience too, they're, you know, accompanied by the rep the whole time, from the start to, you know, as soon as they get there, um, and then, yeah, the hotel stay, most meals, um, and all the access to the sites and the activities that they do. So it's, it's a great, great thing that they do.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so um, I will take a motion to approve the foreign travel trip to Paris.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Hamilton, second.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. And the next tra, trip is for Panama?
Yes, so we have Mrs. Sharky, the counterpart, Megan, one of our Spanish teachers, and she has traveled um, several times for our department as a lead chaperone and as um, a supporting chaperone with, uh, this time, the EF Education First Travel Company. So she is planning one to a new destination for our department, which is Panama. She would like to go in February of two thousand and twenty-seven, and so it would be um, a similar setup, we would have um, the, the hotel, flight, and the activities all covered in the price, um, which is also in the four thousand range, and yeah, about four thousand one hundred. And so that would be, like I mentioned, leaving a, a day or two before February vacation starts and coming back um, towards the end of it, and, which is just helpful for, I had meant to say that before, it's helpful to leave a day or two before the weekend because with a, a bigger group of travelers to find space on the flights, uh, you know, the weekend flights get really busy, so um, it just helps to have travel group go a day or two before that weekend, before the vacation starts. So she would be taking um, a group of, and it would also be upper level, this time, Spanish four and five students who are currently enrolled in the language um, to Panama and an outside of Panama city, uh, another city called Chitre, so it would be a little two-part excursion there, and it would be as well, a cultural and historical exploration trip with hotel stay in the price, including, again, the meals, most meals, the hotel stay and the flights and the activities. And if I, if I can jump in, this, I was so thrilled that she was planning to go, as I spoke with you, Mrs. Palma, about this, this is the trip that I went on, um, when, when I was sponsored by the, by MASSS. Um, obviously, they're doing a little bit more because they're, they're there for longer, but what a wonderful trip this is going to be, and I'm really excited for our students to experience um, this trip. It just was so educationally driven, um, which is something that I've, I've really had conversations actually with EF about how important that is to, that it's not just a touristy, you know, trip, that they're really immersed in the education and, and really understanding the, the culture. So it's, I'm thrilled that they're going on this. I think that's a great point to mention, Chrissy. I think especially in, in Latin America, there's such a history there with, you know, the European colonization, but the indigenous troops- Yes. Uh, the indigenous tribes still prevailing with their culture and keeping it alive, and there's a great effort in a lot of societies to keep indigenous cultures alive, so I really appreciate that EF digs into that and wants to help preserve them and, and teach the students about, this isn't just a Spanish language-speaking place, but there are indigenous languages, indigenous cultures that contribute to the greater modern-day society that we have today. Um, and just, you know, being uh, Latin American heritage myself, I really appreciate that, and it's something that I've, I've really been passionate about in my own studies, so I, I love seeing that, that the students really gain that perspective.
Thank you. Do we, uh, questions or comments?
Sounds incredible.
Yeah.
Sounds incredible. Um, I had one question, I, I think you said this already, but just to confirm, so this is a group, this Education First group is one that we've used before.
Oh, yes.
And um, and they also have the um, tour guide who's with the students all the time?
Yes. Yes, it's the same setup in, in that way, yes. EF, we've traveled to Peru, Costa Rica, Puerto Rico, we've, we've gone quite a few times with, with EF, they've, both companies have been wonderful to work with.
Amazing, thank you.
Okay, then I will, um, I will take a motion to approve the foreign travel trip to Panama.
So moved, Percy?
Second?
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Palma.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next item, vote to approve overnight travel trip, Washington DC and Maryland. Dr. Cabral.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Pruitt is gonna speak about this one to Washington DC and Maryland.
Sure, I'm just promoting Victoria Hunt to the, be a panelist.
Oh, great.
Um, okay, great. Uh, this is our annual CADCA Leadership Conference um, for our students, and Eastern Wings of Hope is a wonderful partner, and they sponsor our students in, to attend. Victoria should be joining. Let's see, yep, she is here, uh, to answer any questions, um, and to kind of go over what the trip entails.
Welcome.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Oh, I'm blurry. Uh, so personally, this is my, um, I got asked a couple of weeks ago, honestly, to go on this, so I don't have too much background, but I do know that uh, typically, in years past, it has been a small group of students that have been vetted um, through Eastern Wings of Hope that takes these students to uh, DC, to the CADCA conference. It's a four-day trip, I believe, we leave Monday morning out of the Eastern Y, and then they, we come back Thursday, um, and I'm hearing that it's just-
Oops, oh.
Twelve-hour days of conferences, um, and kind of uh, going to different sessions and things like that, so again, I thought that Chelsea was gonna be on here, I think.
Oh.
Not me, but I, I don't have too much more info.
Well, fortunately, this is an annual uh, trip that the, or program that the school committee has heard about, we've had presentations from the students when they return, so they are, they are quite familiar with this wonderful program, but you're doing a great job, Ms. Hunt, thank you.
And Chelsea is on here as well, yes. Let's see. Here she comes. Oh. Chelsea, would you like to add anything? Oh, here she is.
Hi, I'm so sorry, my computer was glitching out. Um, yeah, Victoria said it beautifully, it's CADCA, we've gone, I think this is our fifth year trying to go. Um, it's completely paid for, for the students, we just ask that they bring like two hundred dollars for food and stuff like that, um, and then for chaperones, it's completely free. Um, so right now, myself and Victoria are going, and we're currently looking for one more chaperone to potentially come with us, and then, right now, we have applications went out on Monday, and so we're seeing, we've had a couple of students sign up, and so we're gonna do some interviews with them in the coming weeks.
That's great. Um, any questions or comments from some, uh, school committee members? No, we love this conference.
Yes. Just one question, how many students are you looking to take?
So we have budgeted for up to ten students to come. We, most of our students in the club have actually already gone, and so we're expecting probably a lower number this year, so we're, we're aiming for maybe like five to eight, um, but we don't think we'll get all ten.
Got it, thank you.
Good. How is this funded, if you said it's um, the student does not pay?
Yeah, so we are funded by the Drug Free Communities Grant, and so it's all through that, they pay for everything.
So Eastern Wings of Hope.
So are the students only students who are involved with Eastern Wings of Hope? Or can it be any student at OA?
So we advertise it to any student, but we kind of ask, like, since it is for the club, it's kind of to help them get the training to be a part of the club, if that makes sense. So they don't have to be in it right now, but we ask that hopefully they will want to be, especially after going to CADCA.
Great, thank you.
Is this, is this trip only available to OA students or EMS students able to go as well?
So I know they've done in the past where they've taken, I think, seventh and eighth graders. But I think this year, we're probably just going to stick with high schoolers. If there's maybe an eighth grader who we see is like very interested in substance use prevention, we can consider that, but I think we're just keeping it with the high school students.
Thank you, anything else? All right, so I will take a motion to approve the overnight travel trip to Washington DC and Maryland.
So moved, Persia?
Second.
Second, Loomis.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you so much for joining us tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Before we move to the next item, I would just like to add what I usually do after we talk about and approve foreign trips. And that is the tremendous dedication that it takes of our staff to do this. It sounds like, oh, wow, they're going to Paris, they're going to Panama, they're going to Washington DC. As someone who has taken students on trips, you can imagine, it can be very stressful. They're going to other countries or to the capital and there's a tremendous amount of responsibility. It usually takes place during the staff members' vacation, when they can be with their families and their children. So to provide this opportunity, it really is a sacrifice for them. While they enjoy it, obviously, and have a wonderful experience with the students, but especially the ones that do it time and time again. So we, we really want to thank them because without them to organize and chaperon the trips, they really wouldn't be taking place.
And the opportunities for the students that are offered in this district are really, really incredible.
Yes.
When I talk to other, you know, other families in other districts, I can't believe the number of offerings and opportunities.
Absolutely.
And just, you know, the help to families to fundraise, to support their students. So it's, it's open to so many people. It's really, it's incredible. Yeah. I'd come back in my next life and go to OA. Right? Yeah. Okay, so next item on the agenda is Discussion of Policy IN Middle School, Middle School Pathway Exploration, first reading, Mrs. Pruitt?
Yes, so this was a policy that you all approved already. We submitted the policy to the state as was required. And although they do not approve policies, they came back with feedback for us. And so the new policy has just the timeline in it. They, they suggested, in order for it to be accepted, that we add in the timeline. So you'll see October as a timeline of when all the information needs to be provided.
So it's in the second paragraph, the last sentence, it's underlined.
That's the only change.
Yes.
That's the only change.
Yep.
Because of our policy, we still have to have two reads. So we'll have the second read at our next meeting to vote. Are there any questions or comments on this change? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, first.
I was just going to say, under information sharing, it just says annually, middle schools will provide CTE vocational schools with the names. Should that, for our policy, should that be Eastern Middle School or something more specific? Or does that matter?
Where is that? Say that again.
The bullet, information sharing.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It says annually, middle schools will provide CTE. Should that say Eastern Middle School? Does that matter?
Well, it says this collaboration includes, so if you look at what, what this is stating, it's, I think it's more about the policy rather than the actual school itself. But if you'd like that changed, it's fine.
Doesn't matter, I just.
It's, I mean, it's, it's fine. Yep.
I just had a question because the sequence was a little confusing in my brain. So the, the idea with the timeline now is that students are able to, are eligible to apply and the information that's made available annually by October 15th is the students who wish to apply?
No, we have to provide student addresses and names to our partners.
Right.
So Southeastern and Bristol County, we, we have to have that information provided to them. And so, and so this states that that information will be made available to them by October 15th.
Okay, but also when you go down to the information sharing bullet, parents may opt out before October 15th?
So we, we did, we had Mr. Carroll sent out a Google form to families that if they did not want their information shared, they had to complete that. And then we do not send that child's name.
So I guess silly question, but if they don't notify till before October 15th, but you have to send it by October 15th and they're the same date, then how does that work?
Can you repeat that?
So parents have to notify by October, before October 15th that they don't wish to do that. So they say on the 14th, I'm telling you, I don't want my information shared. But we have to share it by the 15th. So are we actually sharing it on the 15th? That's the part that's confusing. And it seems silly, but I'm just trying to put down the sequence in my head of like, they both are by the same date, so there's not like a day or two gap in there to make the event occur of sharing. So if I, as a parent, contact on the 14th and say, I don't want it shared, but you had to share it by the 15th, then you might have already sent it, right? Does anyone else follow?
No, I, I understand completely.
And because I'm the parent that'll be like, oh, I had to do it by the 15th and then, yeah. Maybe there's just a gap needed, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can change that date for sure. I know that Mr. Carroll sends it out October 1st, so that we just give the parents a shorter timeline. Because that's when, that's when it says we have to send it out by, it's October 1st.
Or, yeah, maybe we just make a day or so gap, just so there's.
I mean, it does say before, if we leave it in the policy as before October 15th, we can make a different timeline when we, you know, when we send out the Google form. But it's stated here that the information sharing, they can opt out before October 15th because on October 15th, we send out the information.
I think that's the part that it was, because it says this information will be made available annually by the 15th instead of on the 15th.
Right.
So it's the part that was confusing.
Yep.
So maybe it just has to be on. Okay. Thank you. That's what happens when you put a data person. Think in terms of when data is moving around, sorry.
Next item, vote to approve policy IMK Religious Holidays, second reading. So we had the first reading on October 28th. You'll see that there were some minor edits in the, this policy, just to kind of clean it up a little. There were a couple of concerns raised when we talked about it last time. So one was whether there should be an expectation of students to notify their teachers, maybe a certain number of days in advance, to be written in the policy. And maybe a certain number of days that the students have to make up the work to be written in the policy, just to make things clearer for the families. But then there was another concern raised that they didn't, we didn't want to put the responsibility on parents as some may not be aware of the policy or, you know, the students may not, so that we don't want to disadvantage the students. So we brought it back to the policy subcommittee and we kind of, we talked about all these concerns. Mrs. Pruitt was there as well. And we want to make sure the policy, really with all of our policies, is that they're broad enough to be flexible so that, because the more, the more constrained they are, the more constricted they are, the more chance that something will be followed or that somebody may have a different way of looking at something or maybe somebody wants to approach it differently. So with this policy, I think we wanted to keep it as is with just these minor changes so that, you know, the educators have an opportunity to maybe say to their classrooms, if, if you have a holiday coming up, you're not going to be here. It would be helpful if you let me know by ABC or the families can reach out proactively. It gives, it gives a little more flexibility in how the educators kind of interact with their students over these issues.
The difference between policy and procedure.
Right, exactly.
Yep.
So I don't know if anyone has any other questions or comments, if that sounds reasonable, if I didn't explain it well. And Betty?
Do we have procedure around this as well?
Yes.
And that would be in the handbooks?
Uh, is it in the handbook?
It's, it should be in the handbook, but I will, I will double check. And if not, then we can make sure that that gets included.
Okay, I think the main, I had given some feedback when we did the first reading. I think the main purpose behind my feedback was totally agree with your comment on flexibility and wanting educators to be able to sort of ask for information earlier, do what they wish. But I also want families and students to feel appropriately empowered to celebrate their religious holidays and communicate about that and know how to communicate about that. And I've definitely had families who have said to me, I, I didn't know how to speak up about that or I didn't realize I had to do certain things. And so the students sometimes take on that pressure themselves. Like, I know it's a religious holiday, but I still want to not miss a quiz or have to do a makeup or what have you. So I just want to make sure that in our, in the fact that we have educational events on religious holidays, that we're also still making the right space for families to know how to do that. And if it's not consistent by grade or by school, it just gets harder and harder for people to navigate. So as long as we have it covered under a procedure, I totally get it. There is a massive difference between policy and procedure. But I do want to make sure that people know what to do and how to do it so that they feel very comfortable operating within those boundaries, if that makes sense.
To add to that, I think also, I don't know if this is policy or procedure, but within a reasonable time period, I think needs to be better defined of what is reasonable. That's going to be difficult because it really depends on what the assignment is.
The grade level too.
Right, exactly.
I think, I think that's, that's the point of having this broad so that depending on what the class is, what the assignment is, what the grade level is, you know, the educator can make that determination with the student or the student's family. You know, if we say two days, maybe that's not reasonable for the project that is due. Or maybe it's something that would take a day. Or maybe it's a kindergartner and they're not going to have to do the assignment at all. You know, it's, it's just going to be different. And I, I think with these policies, what happens when we make them too narrow is that it keeps coming back and having to be revised over and over again. And as you can see, nothing can get done quickly here. It's, it makes, I, I understand what you're saying, but I think that may be more of a procedure in the handbook, again, depending on the grade band that we're talking about.
It's also operational, right? The, the principals, I was just going to look at Ms. Kavanaugh, but she had to leave. You know, we, we handle them on case-by-case bases if there are concerns. And I think we've actually gotten quite good since this started when, when no one was really aware of this and we were all sort of navigating something new. And so it, it really is a case-by-case or a school-by-school situation.
And I, and I know that things fall through the cracks, right? There's sometimes, some, there's a holiday that might not be recognized by somebody or a student may feel uncomfortable talking about that they're going to be out for a holiday. Trying to think where I was going with this, but.
But those are things that we manage administratively.
Right, and I, and I think that that, there, there always can be those issues. But having, even having it in a policy doesn't mean that's not going to happen again.
Exactly. And, and just going back to the, to, you know, even at a particular grade span, the time might be different based on the assignment that, that is to be made up. So there could be a homework assignment that is easy to make up and the, you know, you want to put parameters on that for when, when the children, student can turn that in. Or there's a major project too, that you might provide extra time. Or if it's a one-day holiday versus multi, multi-day holiday, you know, there's, there's, there's so much in there that if we were to target that in a policy, it would be very limiting.
Okay. Is there a, or what is the process, I guess, under which educators are informed of the various upcoming religious holidays and their respective, probably not the right term, but it's the first word that comes to my mind, is sort of start time. So some holidays start at sundown the night before and students have homework due that night. They try to get it done, they don't get it done before sundown, they, their pencil's down at that point. Like, so is there, is there a calendar that's distributed? What is the?
Calendar and written guidelines.
Yep.
I think it would help to actually state that in the policy, that the, that the holidays are communicated broadly because I think it's, it's, it's something that everyone who knows the community has a good appreciation, understanding of.
So I'm sorry.
It's our policy to distribute those religious holidays in advance, so there is awareness of them.
Do we distribute or is it the Human Rights Committee?
We, we do it in conjunction with the Human Rights Committee. We distribute it.
They, they provide us, we double, you know, we look and double check and, and then we do provide that to the staff. The, the list of all the holidays, the calendar.
Yeah, I mean, I still feel like that's an operational.
I feel like we'd be putting it in our policy to say you have to send this out, which we hope they would, but that's not really our place to like mandate that you have to share it with the staff, I guess, right? I know we're kind of.
It is operational, yes.
Splitting hairs.
Unless we're, I mean, if we, I will say that while I am aware of isolated incidents that happen and the teachers generally work that out with the students, I'm not aware of a significant issue that we're facing right now that would require a change in the policy. So I would probably, I would probably need to ask wherever a significant concern is so that we can take it into consideration when we talk about these things. But as we're sitting here, Mrs. Pruitt and I are not aware of significant issues that are widespread in the district as a result of not having that in the policy. And we would want to know, of course, if there is.
Is it fair to say at the beginning of the year, when principals gather with their faculty and they're talking through the year, like, there's conversations in that back-to-school meeting about religious holidays or students who may be out for travel or students who may be out for illness?
And not only that.
And like the.
When, yeah, when, when holidays come, they also send reminders. Just a reminder, this is coming this month or this week. And I see those all the time.
Go as it should, because there was a, because rare human, human error occurs. Generally, the student or the teacher, the, this teacher is typically able to work out a remedy that's satisfactory to everyone with the student and their family?
Yes, absolutely.
I, I don't know of any issues. I do know the policy was not updated for quite a period of time. And so I, and we've, we've had to make changes to our calendar to have more educational days on what were previously acknowledged as religious holidays. So just trying to create something, to your point, that's scalable and flexible for the future. And while the current process is very clearly understood, over time, different individuals are in different roles. And so I was just looking to more memorialize as part of our policy a clear statement of the fact that there would be understanding of those holidays. Because I don't feel like it's, from a staff standpoint, I want to make sure that they also have the appropriate support on knowing that those religious holidays are coming up so they can plan accordingly, because it's difficult, you're just trying to schedule tests and quizzes and get things done academically. So I was just trying to confirm that understanding of it and see if it should be acknowledged. That activity that's happening now should be acknowledged.
So we didn't have any policy on this before.
Okay.
We, before there, there was the change in the policy of not having off Good Friday and Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur, there was no policy.
Oh, it was state, here it says it was adopted the 15th.
That was, that was when it, that's when that changed.
Oh, okay, I thought it changed after that.
No, no, it was the, my first year running for school committee.
There we go, it's a memorialized in your brain, I got it, thank you. So then that's an update for me, I did not realize that.
Yeah, so and.
That tells me how many years I've been in the system.
Yeah, and if you actually go on the MAS website, there are no sample policies on this.
Okay.
So it's not a widespread policy. We put it into place to recognize that, and not just for those three holidays, there are certainly many other holidays, holidays that people celebrate. And we want the families to feel comfortable having their celebrations and not worrying about this. So.
Okay.
I don't know of any unresolved issues, but I do know it hap, I hear of it every year of situations where there was a test scheduled on a holiday.
where there was a test scheduled on a holiday or a quiz or what have you. And I just, and maybe this is, maybe I'm being overly sensitive about it, but I'm, I'm just thinking about like the student that doesn't advocate so well for themselves and, and isn't going to tell their teacher of why they weren't in school. And then the parent that doesn't know better, that they should be calling the school or the teacher to say, or the principal or whatever, that my child is not going to be in school because of a holiday.
But I think that in those situations, it really doesn't matter what our policy is, that it's still going to be that situation. It's, it's having something specific in the policy isn't necessarily going to make the parent or the student, the student who's not even going to be aware of this policy most likely, speak up more. I think that, I think that is definitely an issue with, and that, and I've had people say the same thing to me. And I know, I know in the beginning with this policy, there was a lot of misunderstanding because people thought that there were to be no tests or quizzes on religious holidays. And that's not the policy. And the reason that's not the policy is because we are trying to recognize all of the holidays that people may celebrate. And if you restrict all of the educators from doing anything major on a holiday, they're going to be so restricted in the days that they can't have a test or a quiz. Am I saying this right?
Yes, yes.
So I think that what may be actually helpful is to review, have administrators review the procedures that are in their handbook, make sure the families are, because I know the handbooks could be very lengthy and you're not always reading it cover to cover. But sometimes maybe some kind of note in the handbook or an email or something saying, just an FYI, if you're curious about these five issues, here's in the handbook where it is. Just like when we put this policy manual back on the website, we want to have, here are the most accessed policies by families to kind of stand out.
Yeah, and I, I will say that I know Mrs. Kavanaugh does send out reminders to staff. I have one of her emails here where she reminds staff of upcoming holidays and just to be mindful of students who are absent in observation of the holiday, to turn in work without penalty, and that we make every effort to not schedule major assessments or projects to be due on the holiday. However, in a, in another one, another email she sent out, the holiday was two weeks long. So, you know, that's where we have to be cautious to say we're not going to have assessments or projects due on those dates because, because some holidays are much longer. And it would be extremely limiting, just like Jackie said.
And I, and I think, you know, hopefully if a parent or a student is having an issue or a concern or doesn't feel comfortable, they'll reach out to one of us or they'll reach out to a teacher or administrator that they feel comfortable with and.
We did have, and it is also on the DEIA webpage, even though we don't have a director. And she would field a lot of these questions. We don't have that position anymore. And so it falls on all of us to make sure we're hearing parents. But that is, you know, one of the detriments of not having a position like that where people would know to go and direct specific concerns. But I just want to say, because people that are watching that maybe don't have a student in schools or haven't, the way we're talking about really very few exceptions kind of makes it sound like our kids are afraid of our teachers. And I know that wasn't anyone's intention. This is not a rampant issue here. And our teachers and our staff has, have wonderful relationships with our students. And they feel very comfortable saying this. They don't need to advocate for themselves per se to ask for an extension on something. That's just a conversation with their teacher. They don't need to fight for these rights. These are rights and, and responsibilities that the teachers constantly have conversations with. While we may have outlier students that have difficulty expressing themselves to adults in general, we know who those students are. We try to work with them. And they're very much the exception as opposed to the rule. I just don't want people, you're not saying this, but I'm hearing everything that's being said and it sounds like it's really tough for kids to express themselves here. And that's, that's not our experience. And I know, you know, that's not our experience. I just want to make sure that others who aren't here know that's not the experience.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to go back to a point you made earlier. A lot of the school districts don't have, maybe don't have policies like this. What, how do they function around religious holidays? Is it strictly procedure and there's no formal policy within the school committee?
Yes, or they don't have a procedure at all.
And that would just mean students would take, or curriculum would not be based around religious holidays potentially at all?
Right.
Okay.
And they just work it out with their teacher.
Yeah.
Is this, if you don't mind me asking, like, just a legacy of something that's somewhat always been unique to Easton with religious holidays? Or from at least the last 10 years?
So when the school committee at the time voted to not have those three holidays off, Rosh Chavon and Kippur and Good Friday, it was, it was a really big deal. Because there were some, there were some towns that were going that way and some towns that still weren't. But, and then there, we were, the committee was starting to get complaints from parents whose holidays were not one of those three and it was not being recognized. And they didn't have a day off. And why was this holiday a day off and my holiday isn't a day off? There were a lot of complicated issues going into that. So the school committee had voted.
It was a recognition of equity.
Right, so the school committee had agreed to eliminate all religious holidays in terms of having them off the calendar and allowing families to take the time they need for whatever holiday it was. And then to kind of help people understand that they, their holidays would be recognized and their children wouldn't be penalized for taking those days off. That's kind of what fed into having this policy. I'm trying to think who actually wrote it and I don't remember.
Really, Carolyn? I should have. Carolyn, sorry.
It might have been, it actually might have been Jane. I'm not sure that I can't remember. But yeah, but that, that was how this policy came into being.
So it just does seem, I feel like you keep rereading it. It does seem like it is just a light procedure of, you have a certain number of days that someone else will decide.
It's very general, right? No, it's very general.
Like to the point where maybe should be considered just a procedural?
I think it's a recognition for people who are wanting to ensure that they are supported in celebrating the religious holiday. And to the feedback you gave, I, I don't think that was the intent and I, I wouldn't have thought those were the words I said. But I do think that there are many student, yes.
No, it definitely wasn't anyone here's intention.
I think there are many students who, due to external factors outside the building, may be shy about speaking about their own religious beliefs. And I also think that there are students who just put a lot of academic pressure on themselves. And so they may not speak up or may not want to raise their hand in a large setting or in a classroom or what have you. I know most of the staff would be incredibly supportive. I can't think of a single staff member who would not. But I don't know that they always know of every single religious holiday that could be celebrated nor is an expectation that they have the calendar memorized. So I wouldn't expect them to, to know all of those and for, to know how to ask a student to check in on it. So while I would not expect anyone to hold that against a student in any way, shape or form, and I've never seen that experienced, I do think there are kiddos who just struggle at times to share things like that, especially with the current pressure that they may feel.
It is not just with religious holidays.
Exactly. There are plenty of other things where they just are either putting academic pressure on themselves or feel peer pressure, quite frankly, to speak up in certain situations. So that was more of my concern than anything else is how, do they know how to do that? So I was just going to say too, our, our school site does have the link from the HRC. There is some language on there that does talk about the completion of work in that HRC piece. So it's probably something to just review as part of the procedures and what we're talking about here. If we want to give educators more flexibility and freedom to do that, then we probably want to take that out of the HRC link. But we could certainly suggest that the HRC update that to reference the handbooks, to your point.
I'm on it.
Thank you. Just to like, to reference the handbooks as what the procedures are per school. It's more about making sure people feel informed and empowered and that the educators have the support they need in those processes so they don't get the, oops, I forgot to tell you two days ago that that was a religious holiday and that's why I didn't do it.
Right. No, I think that makes a lot of sense.
That's not fair to them either.
Do, do we feel comfortable voting on this policy tonight? Okay, well, so I'll make a motion and you can either approve or not. So I'm going to make a motion to approve policy IMK religious holidays with revisions that are in the copy that you have in front of you. Do I have a second?
First, you have a second.
All in favor? Okay, great. So the next policy is EEA student transportation.
Good night.
Good night.
And there were just, again, we had the first reading October 28th. There was just a minor change, but I know there was a question about quarry checks. And I know, Mrs. Pruitt, if you wanted to.
Yes, so we don't do the quarries on the bus drivers. The bus driver, the bus company does the quarries and we have access to them at any point.
So is it part of our contract with the bus companies that they do the quarries?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
It felt obvious, but it also felt important to make sure it was captured and confirmed.
Absolutely. And I also believe that they have to have an annual quarry through the RMV in order to maintain their CDL.
Yes.
So if you aren't quarried by RMV on an, which I just learned that recently, on an annual basis, you will lose your CDL license again. And they also have to have a school bus certificate, which goes through RMV, which is an annual piece, and a medical clearance, which comes annually unless you have certain characteristic or conditions and then it's every six months that they, they have to turn that into their employer. Otherwise, they are ineligible to drive under DOT regulations.
Wow, you are a wealth of fascinating and important information. I appreciate you.
Some random facts.
I love that. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
I'll ask Colleen if I have any.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve policy EEA student transportation. Do I have a second?
First, you have a second.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, so schedule of payments. We signed several warrants, 037S, 038S, 041S, 095S, 094S, 093S, 092S, 091S, 090S, 075S. Okay, next item on the agenda. Can I just catch up to myself? Public comment. So once again, if any members of the public here in person wish to make a comment, please raise your hand and you will be invited to do so. Please state your name and address for the record. All remarks should be addressed to the full committee through the chair. Each speaker will have three minutes to state their comment. Topics for public comment are limited to matters that are within the scope of the school committee's authority. Public comment is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. Does there, anyone have a public comment? Okay. Next item, superintendent notes, Dr. Cabral.
Okay, only two things. I know we have a really long executive session tonight. I want to note that National Honor Society induction is on Tuesday and we're very excited to be part of that again. And budget subcommittee, if you're going to talk about it, I'll wait. Budget subcommittee of the town has a, an open forum on December 10th at Frothingham Hall. It will be a posted open meeting and we invite people to come. Anyone that has any questions or wants to meet with any, whether it's the town administrator or there will be members of finance committee, select board and school committee there, as well as myself. And I don't know if there will be other department heads there, but certainly the town administrator can address some questions that people may have or feedback that they would like to share about the budget, about any upcoming override attempts, anything of that nature. The committee is looking to get as much feedback as possible from residents. That's it. Thanks.
Assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt.
Sure, I just wanted to share with you all that I just attended the annual Title I, Massachusetts Title I Directors Conference this week. I did come back early. It's still going on right now. But we did hear a keynote this morning from our representatives down in Washington. And they, you know, they're, they have to be very cautious with what they say to us. But they, there is a lot of uncertainty with our grants, as we know. But that was also confirmed. They were talking about how there's been a lot of chopping of things without a vision. And so they're, they're really looking to see what vision will be put in place for, for getting rid of, there's about 60 employees left in the Department of Education at the federal level and there was 300. So there's a lot of uncertainty there. So, so I just wanted to let you know that they don't have any answers and they're really looking to find answers for us. And I will keep you updated if we hear anything.
Thank you.
Yep.
School committee notes. Colleen?
Okay, so it feels like it was a really long time ago, but it was just two weeks ago. I got to go to the Trans Day of Remembrance or evening. It was actually an evening event, Evening of Remembrance. It was really lovely. Dr. Cabral was also there. It was just a lovely night and I'd never been before and I just thought it was just a really beautiful way that our community supports everyone who lives here, no matter who they are or, you know, how they want to live their life. Like, we, we welcome everyone and want to take care of everyone. So I thought that was just a really nice sentiment for our town. And then also we have the holiday festival coming up this weekend through the Lions Club. So it's going to be a little chilly, bundle up, but definitely get out and enjoy that.
Thank you. Kelly?
So much has gone on over the, the month of November. Just a couple of things I'll highlight. A lot of incredible, incredible accomplishments by the sports teams. Not necessarily all the sports teams landed in all the places that they wished to, but not without a lot of effort and good try by the students. So congratulations to all the students for all of their efforts. It's not always about the final win. It's about all the things that got you there. So congratulations to all of them. A number of incredible fall accomplishments through that process, but also just a number of personal accomplishments, I'm sure, for them as well. Winter sports, I know, are kicking off. So exciting for those students. Lot of the, the student representatives mentioned a lot of incredible school spirit, but a lot of incredible school spirit. If you didn't have a chance to see the OA hallways, they were something else this year. So right down to, I think, scents and costumes were added this year, as well as music into the hallways. So I think they continue to try to outdo each other, which is a fun way. And if you have the chance to be in the building around nine o'clock Tuesday night, it is buzzing. So there are, I was probably, I was here, there was probably about 40 students and Ms. Palma was there as well. I got to see her in person. But all of the advisors were here late. There was pizza and the custodians were about the kindest humans on the planet as they just walked around and looked at the chaos that was in the hallways. They reassured me, all the kids do a good job of cleaning up afterwards. They clean up themselves at the end of the day, on the half day on Wednesday. But they just looked at it and you'd see them just go through and be like, okay, here we go. There's just more, more mess and more chaos, streamers from ceilings. It was a lot. But it is really fun to see them all that engaged and energized and, you know, culminating a pep rally on Wednesday and then the Powerpuff game. It's just, it's a lot, but it's really fun for them. So an incredible week, homecoming, tons of attendance there. I know the younger schools did a lot of things as well in terms of theme weeks and events and fall themed stuff. So really, really incredible time. We joke that it's no school November, but I would say it's also school spirit November because they get to spend a lot of time celebrating and parents also got to be in the buildings for parent-teacher conferences.
for parent-teacher conferences, which was awesome. So a lot of incredible engagement, a lot of hours put in by the educator staff and the support staff to make all those things happen too. So.
We have the district-wide color, the class color day again for the second year, which was incredible.
It was incredible and I finally found out my son's class color. Because I thank you, Mr. C, for sending that out as a reminder, because no, I don't remember. That is the challenge with having four different colors and lots of children. I do not remember. And I was like, oh, we got to find green. Thank you Celtics for being green and white. And we have green and white as our colors. I appreciate you.
Thank you. Lauren?
I actually don't have anything because I was going to mention, sorry, stuff like that Kelly mentioned. So I'm good. Jim?
Jim?
Yeah, tomorrow night, the Women of Main event on Main Street. It's pretty exciting. My wife and I are looking to attend that. The Holiday Festival on Sunday, also excited to attend. Next week, we have the naming subcommittee's second meeting on Monday night, which is good. We're starting to put applications together on how to apply and formalize the whole naming process again, which is exciting. So stay posted there. Dr. Cabral already mentioned it, the budget subcommittee forum on Wednesday. And then unrelated to school committee, but Stormwater Utility Steering Committee, tentatively Thursday night. So my wife might not know yet, but I have something every night next week.
She knows now, because I'm sure she's watching.
Welcome to. Thank you. I just have a couple of things. I attended the MASC, MASSS conference, which was great. I was only able to go one day, but it was very helpful and going through my notes and I'll update the committee on anything that I thought was useful. There were chapter 70 listening sessions. Dr. Cabral did a great job in her three little allotted minutes. It was very hard to get everything out that needed to get out. But it was, it was, it was very interesting because, and I know you guys were all listening, it was clear from the meeting that the funding formula, as it currently is applied, is not working for a majority of towns. And people came up with some very interesting suggestions of how to fix the formula. And so hopefully that'll continue. As Dr. Cabral and Jimbo said, we do have a budget subcommittee, community meeting coming up. We also had one on November 19th at the RO Cafeteria. We had about 15 people in attendance. Committee gave a brief presentation after which we invited questions and comments from the attendees. From the comments and questions posed, we found that we need to be really more clear on the different sources of funding, for example, an operational override versus a debt exclusion override, CPA funds versus operational funds. I mean, why would it, nobody would know that unless they're like living it like we are. And so we just need to be more clear about that. And that we should also be providing information on the cost-saving measures that both the town and schools have put in place over the last 10 years. And I'll be working on getting together some of that information. Somebody brought up a question about regionalization. And I know that's come up in some of our MASC list of questions. And then we also asked for feedback on whether having a red book, like they have with the state in the federal elections, would be useful for an upcoming override just to give different points of view and information. And so we're talking about that as well. And so with that, I'm going to make a motion to go into executive session and we will return to open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining session or to conduct negotiation with non-union personnel with a possible vote pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, EEA, all units and SFI with possible vote and pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with open meeting law and review executive session minutes from March 19th, 2025. And in my opinion, having this discussion public would be detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. Do I have a second?
First, you have a second.
Roll call vote.
Proudly yes.
Persio, yes?
Wasmyn, yes?
Loomis, yes?
Hamilton, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.